Excellent, it's 7:05. This is the so the committee to study by review of the serving on city boards and commissions. Today is August 16, 2022. This meeting has started right now at 7:00 PM. It's and we're gonna start with the roll call. Beth?
Javier, are you here?
Here.
Jamila?
Yeah.
Susan?
Here.
Gwen is still not here. Jana?
Present.
Garrick?
I'm here.
And Cynthia?
Here.
Sixteen.
We have a call. This meeting is being recorded and it's being broadcast over Zoom and is subject to open meeting law this meeting. So hopefully, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna start getting people. We got some people last time as part of the audience. Hopefully, we're gonna start progressively to have people coming in less shy to be able to pull a comment. So we're gonna start with public comment. We're gonna wait a couple of minutes, just in case somebody comes in. And probably because we're not gonna use entire public comment, we're gonna talk a little bit about how we're gonna be working that. So we're gonna wait a little bit if somebody of anybody comes up. Cool, we're gonna close the public comment portion of the meeting. We're gonna move to item number three, which is minutes approved meetings. We haven't received the minutes from last meeting, so we're gonna table. If everybody is okay, nodding or finger up, it's fine, cool. So we're in agreement that we're tabling the minutes. And we're gonna move to sort of the core of the meeting. So if you guys talk a lot to the agenda, the first thing that we're gonna be talking is assignments. And the reason why we're talking about that, it's mainly because of what we talked during last meeting, which is I was gonna make a request to I don't remember, it was Laura Pamela, that about the contact information for every single person who is in charge. I mean, this is chair and the main contact person that is not a staff, who is not employed by the city, necessarily in those cases where it is a civilian in charge of it. And I got that list and I have it with me. And I, hold on, let me see if I, you know, if I can. Beth, is there any way for me to share my screen?
I think that is enabled. Do I have to, let me see if I have to do something.
So sometimes if you go to share a screen, being the host.
Okay, yeah, host only or all participants?
Yes, all other participants, yes.
Gotcha, so you should be able to do it now.
Thank you. And can you make me a co-host? So in that way, if I'm seeing somebody coming in in the waiting room, can I just let them in? Thank you. So I got this and I color, I sort of color coded. I sent an email already to Daniela Madeo, who is the Art Council Chair. And I sort of, I tried to sort of color code it and divide it in groups of either four or five. And the only one that is currently inactive, which is the municipal affordable housing trust fund board trustees. So all the rest, it's it's, we got their contact information. It's pretty obvious that there are places like this when the youth commission, where Alan Wolfe is the main contact person. Or if we scroll down, we have the same with, you know, Pam with the board registers. Or we have, let me go anybody with the norhamptonma.gov. So the idea is that we're gonna start assigning sort of homework for people because we wanna start moving. We had been talking about processes. Our last meeting was pretty interesting. We got a lot of what information we wanna be able to gather, what information we think is important for different processes, including the possibility of creating a easy access portal for people applying to to commission some boards, right? But one of the things, and certainly one of the things that we wanna move besides, you know, technical recommendations to streamline the already existing process is to try to figure it out. You know, if those processes are actually functioning in real life. And the only way to do it is for us to go out of our way and start talking with the people who are already serving. And and I would like to get your availability. I would like to get sort of gauge how much this time available you have to do that. We, just a refresher, we have talked that this would be really simple conversations about the sort of the notion of the chair of the specific committee about how many hours people are putting. Are you guys having a hard time recruiting? How long is taking? And I can sort of write down all this and send it. How long is taking to fill out when they give an opening, right? Or they have they seen candidate that they would like to see, but those candidates are not being considered? Right? I think that everybody here has a pretty keen eye on questions and even more in this specific issue, based in the conversations that we have. So I would like to open the floor to understand a little bit, guys, your availability. Because I wanna be respectful of your time, I wanna be respectful, but I also feel that we need to start moving forward and not talking, we're gonna touch basically about processes, but we need to start getting a sense of what's the reality citywide. So I wanna open the floor and I'm gonna start calling people if, when they raise their hand.
All right, so I'll go. If you're talking about mobility, I'm busy all the time. But I'm here to do the work and so I'm willing to do what I can. I'm assuming from what you said is most conversations should take 20 minutes. I am quite loquacious, so I'm sure it'll take 45. But yeah, you know, if you send me a list, I think I know some of the people on the list.
Perfect.
So, you know, I know Alan Wolfe, I could easily contact him and probably kill two birds with one stone because I have other questions with, for other things that I need to do, so.
Excellent, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna start doing. Garrick, I'm gonna add your name to the, to the ones, to the one that had Alan, which is the agricultural, also we are gonna get agricultural commission, the exciting board of assessors, just don't, don't, don't go crazy with that. Simple, she's, simple business architecture committee. And committee preservation, ah, community preservation committee, this is interesting, and youth commission. And because we're on the record, my appreciation of this is just a joke, it's not that I find it fun or not. Cool, let's, excellent, thank you so much, Gary. Let's move to, I mean, Gary sort of jumped the gun immediately committing. Excellent, but I, you know, I wanna be respectful of your time, so if you don't, if you don't have the time, that's absolutely fine, we can find different ways to engage you. Just posing what I feel would be the most, the task that would put us and move us forward, the most, you know, productive. Jenna?
So I'm sorry that I missed the last meeting. Can you clarify a little bit? What the, you talked a little bit about talking with current chairs about, it sounds like about the process of recruiting. Speaking from the planning board, I mean, I'd be happy to go and talk to George, but I have a feeling that he would say, I have no idea, go talk to Carolyn. Because on the board, we don't see anything that's happening until they say, oh, a new member is coming on. So, I mean, I've been on the board for five years, so I'm not totally sure. I'm happy to go and talk to him and to some other folks, but I'm not sure that that's specific line of questioning, at least in that board's capacity, that he's the right person to connect with. So maybe you could just give a little bit more background on what the goal is of talking to the chairs as opposed to talking to the staffers.
So the, you know, the staffer is only a son with the city, it's really simple. And in the case of the planning board, immediately when you said that, my question is, is George okay with that? Wouldn't he, wouldn't he want to know who is applying even before they just show up because they were selected? I don't, I start, wouldn't that be nice? Wouldn't that sometimes that other members would be able to recommend somebody because it's a highly specific, highly specific board? Right? Obviously, each, each, each one, each, you know, each commission, each board, depending, also highly depending if they are, the capacity, which is advisory, if it's a temporary commission like ours, changes dramatically. So what I'm looking is, it's a conversation about where they are, how they are doing, what they would improve and what they are seeing. I appreciate, for example, that if Gary's gonna talk to Alan Wolfe, if you can, if you can talk to, take the one, so the cluster that I have with, with the, let me see here. The cluster that I have here with the let me see, the planning board I have and I, the license commission, parks and rec, planning board and the board of registers. Right? Which are highly technical, are pretty specific. But again, as you said, you know, if, if, if you feel that George is gonna say, well, you know, I don't know until somebody shows up and fills out the position, I would like to see if, you know, is that working? Is that the right way to do it? Is it, I mean, but the hell do I know, is there a lot of white people serving? Wouldn't it be good to have people of color? Is it a lot of dudes? You know, we, we, I mean, I, I if you guys feel that I can make a list of questions, I will do it. But I, so far, I trust immensely your criteria. But if you feel that I can sort of come out with guidelines for those conversations, I absolutely can do it. So Jenna, would you be able to do the, the cluster that I just mentioned?
Um, I think so, depending on what's your timeline, I guess. I'm about to enter a very busy period with work, so I think I can do it, but it, I can't do it like in the next two weeks, for example. I could definitely talk to planning board and CPC since I'm already on them, that those are much easier for me to arrange. So if there's a shorter timeline, I'd be happy to do those two, even if it's divvying up your other categories. So maybe it makes sense for other people to talk about their timing too and then see where I can fit in. I'd like to support the project, but also wreck, I don't wanna hold people up by saying I can do something I can't.
Sure, sure, let's, yeah, let's, let's keep talking. Cynthia? I the cluster that I have a possibility for you, it's, let me see. I have health board, board of health, historical commission, housing partnership and human rights commission. And I can, I can sort of change because I know that when it's part of the housing partnership, so I can change that one for a different one.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with those. The only thing I would say is that just my experience, I'm on the board of health. And my experience is, in some of these commissions, you have the, and I'm just gonna, you know, you have the staff person, in the case of the board of health, reports to the mayor. And then we have the chair of the board of health, who is a community member. I can ask the same questions to those two individuals and I may get some very different answers. Okay?
I love, I love different answers.
But I think, I think we have to be careful because I think that might happen in some of the other commissions committees too. You're gonna get one perspective as a board member versus one who's the department head who works for the mayor, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, so this, this comes down to so the equivalent would be my comment in last meeting. When we ask the city solicitor about compensation, we should be conscious that it's an opinion. Neither the mayor or the city council is bonded to that opinion. It's an opinion, it's an informed opinion, but it's an opinion, right? So my perspective, and I'm willing sort of to be a little debate on this or challenge on this, is that I'm gonna say it, what the hell? A staff member is gonna hold party line. And I don't see that a person working for the city saying anything else that what the city is doing, right? Or what, what, you know, whatever they are doing. I'm not really interested on that. I don't know if you guys are, but I'm not interested in sort of listening to party line. I'm really interested about the chairs and the members. So if, that's what I wanna hear, right? Because the idea for us is to streamline the process and to sort of clarify the process and bring how people are seeing the process that are being part of it, right? So for me, it's more important, and the information that I got here, when there is a civilian chair, so somebody who is not working in charge of the committee board, we got that email, right? It's not that we got the email from the, we only got the email from the city person when the city person is the one as a liaison, but also as a chair, right? Like Pam. But, um, but I mean, I don't know, Cynthia, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good way to go, yeah. I mean, I think they all operate probably a little bit differently, so in our questioning, if we find, okay, I don't think I'm really getting the full picture here, we might wanna jump to another individual that's on your list, so that's good. So I'm, I'm fine with the four, I think it's just gonna be a matter of how soon they will get back to us and we'll schedule the time and so who knows what that's gonna look like.
Yeah, and, you know, yeah, absolutely. Jamila?
I was able to talk to the chair of the Human Rights Commission. And I can circle back and ask more questions of her if that's needed.
Cool, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of, I'm gonna trade the Human Rights Commission to another one and I'm gonna give a new one to Cynthia. And whoever you work with, whoever cluster of people you work, I'm gonna add to that one. The Human Rights Commission. Do you feel, Jamila, do you, I know you're super busy, but do you feel that you would be able to get for for contacts to do this sort of, this interview?
Yeah, I think I could do that.
Excellent, let me see my, my magical and I'm sorry that I'm not sharing it, it's only that my screen is not as big, so when I do it, you get lost and I like to see you. Let's see. Okay, oh, okay, so I'm gonna, so I have this one, Jamila, which is the Council of Aging, Conservation Commission, Disability Commission and the Human Rights Commission. Is that okay?
Yeah, that works.
Excellent. Give me one second, I'm gonna and Jamila. Excellent, I'm gonna send all these to everyone of yours, it's gonna get a, an email from me with this is, this sort of assignment. Cool, excellent. Mara? Are you starting classes soon?
Yeah, I was about to say, it's, my situation's probably most similar to Jenna. I'm wrapping up summer classes and work and preparing for the fall, so it kind of depends on timeline for me as well.
Okay. Let's do something, so what I can do after I sort of rearrange things, I can send you both an email. And because I do think that this is gonna take at least, if we're meeting every two weeks, at least it's gonna take a month to be able to do the collection. Right? And in the meantime, hopefully, as you've seen for the agenda, we're gonna be deploying outreach to the wider community at the same time. So there is gonna be two different tracks going. So maybe rather than having four or five, you can work with two. Right? Because I'm also gonna get, I'm also gonna take three or four. So in that way, you guys would have just two. And Jenna, one of those you would get would be the, the planning board. Okay? And always, and I wanna, I wanna be pretty sort of upfront with this. If in any point, any one of you feel that you're not gonna be able to follow up and all that, let me know and I can do the follow up. That, that's, that's not a, I don't have a life, so it's not an issue. So it's not a problem, right? So just shoot me an email privately and and we can make it happen. So at least, you know, it's absolutely fine. And even more, if you're, you know, if your work is being set up a lot, or if you are going back to classes. Cool, cool, so I'm gonna be sending this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start moving the stuff around and I'm gonna send this out. Is there any question in, do you feel that, should I send a set of questions, sort of a, the questions as a guideline for you? Or do you feel that you can, you, every one of you can sort of take it from where we are?
I would like a guideline personally.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of write a brief guideline with, you know, a set of five questions. The point is, the point is essentially to get the gist of what's going on. Is it working, is it not working? What will you improve, right? And I think that has a lot of value and also because we have been talking a lot about, you know, some people in the community being cited and not, and even though they send sort of requests to be able to reimburse, but also, and I had been thinking about it, we're gonna address that, but I think it's good to sort of do the institutional view insight with the people who are already serving, people who have, had been serving for a while, that I'm pretty sure they have a lot to say about the process. Cool, any question, so we're gonna, Jenna?
I agree with Mara that having a list of questions would be good and just to sort of give us all a shared baseline and then if we wanna go off book, depending on how the conversation goes, that seems good. I do think that asking, as you said, sort of asking people what they perceive individually as the barriers would be helpful. The process may be one of them, but they may see other kinds of barriers that we haven't identified. So having a sort of open-ended question, I think will be good for our data gathering. One question I have, or I would have if somebody approached me with these questions, is how is the information gonna be used? Can we quote people in the final report? You know, just so the chairs have a sense of what we're gonna be doing with what they say, so that we can provide that up to them, information to them upfront and they can answer accordingly. So I guess that's a question for the group. I mean, I think it could be really helpful to be able to say specifically, we're hearing from this board chair that this is a problem or we got this input from this person. But then again, that might also limit the transparency of people's answers, so. But I think we probably just wanna come to consensus around that, so we know what to say.
Yeah. So that's the reason why, one of the points in our agenda is strategy to collect testimonies. And we, we, when we met with Jamila and we were talking about testimonies, this was something that we spent quite a, a lot of time talking about, right? Which is how do you collect testimonies when people, they, they would prefer not to be named? And they would prefer not to, for details not to be told because of, you can reverse engineering, of course you're gonna know who it is. And Jamila, if you can remember, one of the things that we talk is sort of that privacy is paramount, the decision of the person giving the testimony. And this, this is independently if it's somebody serving in a commission, if it's a chair, if it's an elected official, if it's, if it's somebody in the street, if it's somebody with a, this, this would, this, I think what we're gonna talk with this is the general guideline for anybody from any testimony, right, Jamila?
Yeah, I, I when I talked to the chair of the Human Rights Commission, that there were some things that she didn't want to be shared, so I think we're gonna run up against that.
So, you know, I think it's gonna be case by case. There's always the questions, the question of is it okay to share something without naming the person? And I think the amount of information that you're giving away is gonna, is gonna sort of shape the answer as a yay or nay. And this is interesting because, and Cynthia, you know this too, I mean, with the Northampton Police Review Commission, this was really hard. The amount of harassment that the police department does with homeless, the homeless population is massive. The amount of homeless people that are willing to come forward with testimonies and details, which they have a lot, not a lot. And, and that was sort of, that was really complicated. And, 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 you know, and this is the same franchise people. It gets also complicated with these people that, you know, they like to serve, they are, they had been serving for a while, then they don't want to jeopardize that. Any suggestion? I mean, I have a suggestion in mind, but I would like to hear thoughts about this issue.
I think if it's a, a general comment, you know, I don't, I don't think in this meeting we should be saying, well, Bob Jones from the Historical Commission, and I just made up that name, just so everyone knows, said this. I mean, I think we need to use the terms, a member of the the committee or commission or board that I interviewed, you know, pointed in this direction. I mean, I think we just need to be as succinct, but also as protective as possible, so that there isn't any way to to backtrack that it was a particular individual. And it would seem to me that, and Jamila, when you said, yeah, there's the individual you spoke to said, you know, these aren't really things I wanna talk about, that just sort of concerns me, you know? Because this is a, a city commission board conversation about how to, how to make our participation better. So that's tough, it's gonna be tough for each one of us to kind of cycle through that and make some decisions about how we're gonna represent that concern. But I'd hate to lose a concern, so it's a challenge, yeah, definitely.
I agree, true, getting, sort of gathering testimonies from people serving in commissions, people, chairs of commissions of select boards, it's a little, it, I feel it's super necessary, but also poses a dilemma in relationship to privacy and things that can be said on the record and off the record and how those things are gonna be perceived. Paramount, again, for us, is to respect the privacy of everybody. That if people feel comfortable sharing something with us, negative or positive, it's up to that person to decide if that's meant to be shared. I, one of the things that we talked with, with, with Jamila was that we wouldn't name the specific commission at all, we would just say a serving community member. And and we would, we would disclose generalities. And this is something, it's an invitation that me and Jamila are doing to you, that if a member comes with one of those experiences. That if a member comes with one of those experiences, because of the complexity of the of of the. Of working with testimonies. If if so, for example, Jamila comes with a testimony saying somebody failed X, Y, and Z. I because of because of what we're talking, I wouldn't say, but Jamila, no, I don't think that's true. I I I I don't think that person felt like that. I wouldn't, I I I I feel that we should trust the member of this select committee. With what they are bringing from their interviews and experiences. And respect the limit of how much i- identifiers or not can be shared, right? So if somebody from this other committee comes and says, well, you know, the general sense of the people that I talk is this. I would be fine with it. Because I would understand that that's the level of anonymity, that's the level of disclosure. That the people that that member of this like committee was able to get. And to be able to have all those testimonies delivered to that person, right? Fox. Yeah, I'm gonna I'm open the floor again. Jenna?
I think that sounds good as a strategy and does suggest that your strategy of clustering is good. Because if functionally, the only person I talk to is the planning board, and that's now on record, that the only person I'm talking to is from the planning board. I cannot then come to good faith and say, oh, the general sense I got from the vague people I talked to is X, Y, Z. So um just logistically, I think we do need to divvy it up broadly enough that we can come back and protect our informants.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why uh we mix heavily, we mix heavily. The 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 sort of the boards and committees. Um so. Anonymity and and privacy would be would would be achievable. Let's put it like that, would be achievable. Is there anything in relation to this, Jamila, that I'm missing?
I don't think so. I mean, I think that. I think if we can get a general sense from who who we talk to of what. I I have a feeling that once we interview people, we're gonna have a lot of similarities across the board. That that's just my general feeling about it. That there's gonna be some things that come out that are just gonna be kind of across the board.
Gary?
And so are we only talking about collecting testimonies from people who are currently serving? Or or and later we will reach out to people who may have applied and and didn't get picked, or that's a separate thing? Okay.
Yeah, um. The the way how we're are ambition this is that this is, and you know, from my point of view, is a low hanging fruit. And it's a good, it's a good sort of warm-up exercise for us to be able to start the conversation with people that. You know, we have their names, they cannot go away, uh they are serving, so it's related to what we're doing. So this is, this is sort of a test over our ability to be able to come together as a select committee. And get the information that we need. When we move to the next stage. Which is if, you know, we have been talking about processes. Now we're moving about testimony, internal testimonies of people serving in 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 committees and commissions. And now after that, we're gonna, we're gonna sort of be moving to the out-facing, which is, which is similar to the one that we're gonna be doing that, but way more challenging. Uh way more challenging, because that's actually is gonna require a high level of outreach. And uh and probably we're gonna have to put sort of a little more time in it and dividing what we're gonna be doing. It's only that I'm starting, where with Jamila, we're starting sort of to think every stage of what we're doing. And how that's gonna achieve a report. And we're gonna be, as 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 we said, as functional, as clear. And really, really, really specific with recommendations. Cynthia, or you're just unmuted?
Uh no, I was just thinking and listening, but I would just have one more question about um, you know, um taking notes. And presenting something written. Um and so we have a choice of like, this is my write-up, here it is, and then it becomes public. Um or we just relay orally what our findings were during those interviews. So I think that that's something we might want to discuss, the best way of uh having that information out.
Yeah, I mean, all all. When 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 you approach somebody, right? So one of the things that we did in the Northampton Police Review Commission, we created a a Google form, right? But when 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 we created the Google form, immediately that became subject to 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 full record. Right? So there was certainly a conversation need, a conversation needed to take place before the person decided if was gonna do it or not. And even the form, before the starting the form, there was a huge paragraph about the data that was being collected, right? And and so the disclosure and the way how a testimony is gonna be collected. Is gonna be in common agreement between the person giving the testimony and the person collecting the testimony. And we need to be clear. Anything, if so, for example, if Jamila sends me a testimony on on email. That's that's uh subject to open record, right? So can can be uh can can, they can be a request of that documentation. Right now, every single of even even the emails of a doodle post that I'm sending you every week are subject to public record request, right? So uh before writing anything down or doing anything. Everyone has to have those conversations, setting boundaries and the limits, and also making clear. And and this is interesting, right? Because those conversations, and I may be wrong. Those conversations probably are gonna be easier with people that also needed to do the open meeting law training. Also needed to do, to sign the same documents that we have signed. And also have been serving or have served before, right? So those conversations, we're gonna have them because are needed. But I think are gonna be way more easier conversations, right? When we move to the out-facing stage of this, when we're gonna be going with people who have not served, that may not be aware of the open meeting. Uh of the open meeting law or public record request. The the there is when it's, we are gonna really have to talk among each other about how we're gonna lay down this, right? Because we're gonna be talking with people who are not necessarily, not necessarily familiar with it, right? So right now, what I would say, we are gonna have those conversations, but we're we we because we're talking with. For the lack of a better word, peers serving in the city. Uh those conversations probably are gonna be way smoother. And just a reminder for everybody here. Uh like our city solider says, if you if you don't want to see it, well, who reads the Leamchir Gaisip nowadays, right? If you don't want to see it in the Boston Globe front page, do not send email, right? Personal opinion, freedom. Anyway, cool. We're gonna, we're gonna move um. And we're gonna talk a little bit, uh hold on. Is there anything else that we want to talk about um in relation to this? I'm gonna be sending, I'm gonna be drafting guidelines. A paragraph in context about political requests, how do we establish a conversation with anybody? And suggested questions, right? Also, it could be that you're talking with the Chair of a committee. And the Chair says, you know what? You probably need to talk to one of my members. This is a person, right? And that may get really juicy, who knows? But I think that uh a lot of conversations and needed conversations are gonna start happening. Is there anything, any question about this? Chair of the Human Rights Commission, Megan Pike. She just left. Uh I was gonna say, I can recognize you and you can say whatever you want. Anyway, Jenna?
I just lost my train of thought. Hold on. Oh, uh on the, you know, taking. Creating written testimony, I think to Cynthia's point. Uh I just want to confirm my understanding that, let's say that I'm on the phone with a chair who I decide to meet with. And I take notes during that conversation. Those notes themselves are can then are then part of public record because they're related to the conversation, correct?
I would say yes.
Cynthia is nodding no. My under, my guess would be yes, but I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
So let me, let me, let me tell you this. Public record request involves even text messages. That city council members or any elected officials are sending in relation to city businesses. It's period. Period. The problem is that if cities comply or not comply with that. So imagine if it's a text message on the phone. Can be part of public record request. So for example. I did, because of my work, I did a public record request with the Northampton Police Department, because I was noticing that. They were deploying drones in every single protest uh uh about police reform. And nothing else. Because of text messages, I learned that the Northampton Police Department was contacted by the Fusion Center, which is dependent, the brick. From the state police. And the brick, the Fusion Center was asking the Northampton Police Department on text messages. If the they had a way for them to be able to access the live footage, the live feed of the drones, right? So text messages are are part of public record request. Any any document that is that is technically technically, but how you're gonna police that, right? If you write something and just throw it to the garbage, how you're gonna police that? There is, I mean, there are, there are limits to what a city can collect from their their officials that are subject to open meeting law. What I would say, it's be mindful of the communication. Uh as you said, I think the best way to contact people is over the phone. Or set up a conversation over the phone. And the notes that you're taking. Think about those notes, starting from the point that you're starting to take note, think about those notes about that are that almost as if they were your final note. So you you don't start taking notes until you have a clear picture of it. Right? It's complicated. Well, you know, it was, it was hell for us. Uh with Alex, with Carol, to try to get the uh, you know. Protect the homeless population identity when we were trying to do this. But, you know. Is that sort of satisfy a little bit your your question?
Yes, I mean, I think my concern and the reason why I'm asking is that I just don't try, if I don't take notes. What I don't want to see happen is I'm then having to rely on my own memory, make a verbal report here, which then is gonna get written up into minutes. And then we're talking about sort of fourth-hand rec, a fourth-hand record based on my very faulty memory. So that's doesn't doesn't feel like a good system to me. So what I'm looking for is a good approach to. What I appreciate what you just said about um taking notes, but taking them with the express intention that think about them as though they're part of public record and treat them accordingly. Uh tha- that's, that's an approach that I can follow. So that was my main. That's what I needed, because I I know I need to take notes, otherwise I will not be able to effectively report back.
Yeah, no, I know, and it's challenging. And I mean, I I don't know if somebody's, I mean. Now that we're talking and somebody watching this, I mean, I don't know if somebody is gonna ask exclusively for notes. I don't know. But the reality is, is there's a variety. Anything that is produced in relationship to the work that we're doing in relation to the city. Because we're sub, we are a select committee, subject to open meeting law and to uh public record request law. We, it it's can be asked, can be requested. Uh the question is, the city, the city many times can argue that the city doesn't have a way to be able to collect that information. Right? Eric?
I think this might be, uh and I think you did a good job of trying to explain it, but we might want to ask Solicitor C. Wall to. Just chime in to give us a.
Yeah, so.
Thoughts are, and not not that his thoughts are the be all and end all, but he might also give us some clarification, so.
Yeah, I, yes, I, so what I was gonna say is that I'm gonna talk to the city solicitor. If I can do it, you know, tomorrow, I'm gonna add best practices. To the, to the document that we were talking with with Mara. Right? And I think that that's a good way to go. So I will, I will be back in touch. And also, I, yeah, I think that that's that's related to that. Any other question?
I think, I think also um i- in in the case of the applicants, like people who applied or people who wanted to apply. And if those notes were. Um for some reason, somebody wanted to see them, I I think the city has the right to redact. Um where it feels um prudent to do so. And in to respect the confidentiality, which is what we're trying to do here, you would redact names, right? And so that gives us a little more freedom, or maybe when we're talking to Bob Jones, we call Bob number one, you know, in our notes. So I think there's ways to to get around it.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely. And they are, yeah, there are different layers, right? I have talked to people that they didn't even would like the city to know that they are speaking up. So I would say, not not, they are not even worried about somebody doing a public record request and exposing their testimony, right? They are more worried about that the city lens, that they are the ones giving it, right? Which raises a different set of questions, right? And I think if. If Jenna, and and I think Cynthia makes a really good point, if you're gonna take notes that are immediately self-censored. In a way that the names are, it's it's sort of, it's changed, feel free to do it. Okay? But anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to talk to uh the city solicitor tomorrow. And and try to have at least three or four best practices uh sentences for us to be able to collect uh testimonies. Perfect. And if you guys think about anything else, any sort of issue that may arise. That I can also ask Attorney C. Wall, just shoot me an email, right? Just remember, just shoot me a one single email to me. Do not email the entire group talking about violating open mini law. Excellent. So we get to the possible compensation uh point that we have touched a little bit based. And we are just um. And and I know, Jamila, you were on vacation. Uh last week. So one of the things that we're gonna do, and I'm gonna do it uh when I talk, hopefully, when I talk to him tomorrow. Is I'm gonna request a written opinion in relation to compensation. I do know that Amers has done um, has paid people serving in committees. And I know that there are, Northampton used to do it time ago, if you if you read the the documents that Pam and Laura send us. In Greenfield right now, is sort of debating the creation of a task force in relation to the police incidents that happened and the court decision that came down. And that one is also being talked about the possibility of compensation. So it's it, I'm saying that because it's it's not an isolated issue, right? And even more when, you know, um we want people serving that actual money is not, is not a barrier. Or or being able to pay for childcare is not a barrier. So that's gonna come, that's gonna probably gonna ask for a written decision, a written decision. A written opinion in it. But at the same time, I wanted to let Garrick and Jamila, if you guys, and and feel free to say no. As city councilors, I think you would be in a better position to ask for that. And I think that's, you know, it could be faster and and better. But if not, I can just just ask for that. And I think that's, you know, could be faster and, and better, but if not, I can just, just ask for that.
I can ask him for a written
Perfect.
Like a written opinion about compensation for committees and commissions. Yeah.
Excellent. 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 Love it. So last, we're gonna move to formulating regular requests to request data. We, uh, we got, we came out with a big list of data that we wanna ask the city. We were talking about demographic, we were talking about homeowner versus renter, we were talking about race, we were talking about other things. So I wanna sort of reactivate a little bit the conversation. Um, having in mind that we had, um, more people than, than the last time to, to talk a little bit more in relation to what would be a data point that we may wanna get from the city. And just to clarify and to explain, uh, this, I would like to include even those data points that we may say, you know, the city's not collecting that. I don't know, if they are not collecting it, I think they should, so we should ask about that, right? Um, Cynthia?
Um, yeah, in terms of a data point, I would be interested since the process as written is to fill out an application for an open position. And all those applications are routed through the mayor's office, so to get a list of everyone who has ever applied um, for an open position within a certain period of time. Cuz that's gonna be our, that's also gonna be our database to contact people. And now those are the applicants, and then we have all those people that never applied because they were intimidated or, or just just said, forget it, I'm not gonna do this. So it's kind of two populations there, we gotta try to begin to develop a group of people that we wanna talk to, so. And that should be public record, actually. I think anyone could ask for that.
Yes. Yes, with the, with the risk that is, would be redacted in some portion. So that's something that, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure to ask tomorrow. But yeah, I think that that's important. Um, and I think was either Mara or Jenna, the one that mentioned the renter versus owner. I don't know if they are, they are sort of gathering their information, that that one was one of the, got a lot of my attention. Uh, remember, because I, I live in Worth Three, which is, you know, uh, the so-called renters' word. So interesting to know. Is there any other thing? I mean, there is a lot of, there is a lot of the list that I have and more that is coming down when we get the minutes. Um, but I, I still would like sort of to push a little bit about the data points. Because I think this is, you know, and, and for, this is for people who was not, uh, in our last meeting. One of the really concrete recommendations that we may be able to do is to bound the city to a specific reporting uh, that they have to do every couple of months, every six months, every four months, three times a year, twice a year. So, um, that, that would be really helpful for advocates, that would be really helpful for transparency. That would be really helpful, uh, as Garrick mentioned a couple of meetings ago. Uh, that would be really helpful as a, as a, as a, as a sort of snap, Snapchat? Whatever, it, it's like a still of that moment where we are with, with people serving in city commissions, right? I think that would be really useful. So probably we're gonna keep talking about this, because I think we can come with more and more stuff. Um, I really appreciate Pam and Beth and Laura and the fact that, you know, I don't think the city had a consolidated list of content information for civilian chairs of the board. And they put it together for us, and I, I really appreciate that. Um, and I think we're, we're gonna keep bothering them and sort of pushing the envelope with this. But I think, I think it's good. I think that's what we need to do. Um, any other recommendation? And again, if, any of these conversations, if you guys have any comment or you think about something, you can email me, uh, with, with, with the common idea recommendation.
I have a thought.
Jenna?
I'm, I'm gonna say this, recognizing that, um, this may not be available and or may not be able to be shared. But in an ideal world, I would love to not just get the list of applicants that Cynthia was talking about, but get a breakdown of how many of those applicants, um, ended up actually being appointed? And how many weren't? And how many, if there were any who sort of began the process of being appointed and didn't make it all the way through, or if it's just sort of a formality, that if they even take the time to start the process, if you finish all of the steps, you're bound to get appointed at the end of it. Um, and if we can learn something from that about, are there trends in who's getting appointed or who's starting the process versus who isn't? Or is it the case that there's such a shortage of applications that basically anybody who applies is gonna get appointed by default unless they're wildly underqualified, um, just because we need, you know, butts in seats. There was something in some of the materials that Pam shared with us that talked about looking that qualified applicants are advanced. Um, but there was not a lot of information about what constitutes being qualified. And in the descriptions of the boards, there are only a few that seem that, that have specific requirements around. We need to have a certain number of, I can't remember exactly, maybe lawyers or people from a particular profession or something like that. But in the case of everywhere else, what is, what is qualified actually look like? Um, is there a rubric for that who makes those determinations? So that, that, again, I'm not, those are multiple different questions. I'm not sure how much of that data we can actually access. But one of my questions about the barriers is is the barrier actually getting to the application point? And might it be that the application processes itself more of a formality than we might think that it is? But I, I don't know. So I'd be really curious to, to learn more about that.
Perfect. This is literally what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Um, this is literally what I'm talking about. Yes, I, yeah, I took notes. I was, I was literally writing while you were talking, Jenna. Uh, and I think that, yeah, this is, this is really good. Um, this is really good. Excellent.
I had another data point too. We, um, looking at how many years of service, how many terms people, whether or not you do it multiple times. I think that's something we did not discuss last time, so we should add that.
This is really, this is really good. And even more because there is sort of a, starting a statewide discussion about terms limit with other positions, with elected positions. So this is really good. This is really, really good. I'm sort of tabulating my notes. Excellent. Is there any other great idea? Because these are really, really good. Cynthia?
Yeah, I just wanna echo, um, what Jenna pointed out about this term qualified. While, while you were talking, Jenna, I went into the website and I went into Pam's material, and nowhere does it say what, what are the qualifications? And I'm not suggesting that there should be or shouldn't be. But, um, I only wanna give this anecdotal story that an individual approached me and said, I'd like to apply for this board, but I live in this other town. Um, do you think I can apply? Cuz I used to live in Northampton, and I called up the mayor's office, and they said, that's purely at the discretion of the mayor. So that's, that's kind of an open qualification right there. And so I think we really need to I'm not saying we need to, you gotta be a resident, or you gotta be a rent, renter and a taxpayer, or not in arrears or anything like that. But I, I just think, I just wanna echo, that's a really important point.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, any other comment? Gemma?
Well, maybe we could also look at if, um, if someone is serving on multiple commissions and committees, or if they've been on them before, then on other ones. Or just in related to like how long somebody has served, like if they've been on other commissions and committees.
I, Javier, uh, Jamila's statement reminds me, maybe we wanna go over the list that you have already. Cuz we did talk about that last week, Jamila. Um, so maybe if we just go through what we have, so then it just refreshes everyone?
Yeah, yeah, as soon, as soon, so what we're gonna do, uh, as soon as we get the minutes, be able to consolidate all the, I have, this is my second list, plus the one that we're gonna get sort of clear with the minutes. So as soon as I have that, I will send it to every one of you. Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh, you know, I also, also, you know, how, in, and this is, I would like to know how the positions are being promoted, right? Uh, you know, I remember having a, a, a tiny bit of an argument with the local mayor, not Northampton, but the different town. Uh, you know, pointing out that, well, most of the people serving in, in that town or city uh, are upper middle class white people retired. And the reason I said, you know, in a, in a really sort of polite way and respectful way, it's because the way, how you promote it, right? And you put it on, on the website, uh, you put it in, in the library. Um, and those are places where, you know, there is a demographic that is paying attention to that. There is a group that is, has access to internet, that has access to, you know, to be sort of, uh, informed about what's going on. And there is a, you know, and there is a huge amount of percentage of public community and population that don't fit that character. And that's one of the reasons. I would love to, to learn how, how they go around promoting and advertising, uh, open seats on, uh, boards. Yes. And and this is, this ties pretty well with what you were saying, Jenna, that it, it, sometimes, you know, maybe wanna see the chairs that are really well acquainted with what's going on, having a better take into a say into, into nominations and into recommending people to serve, right? And, and you know, this is gonna be dramatically different in, in, as Jenna said, in, in those boards and commissions that have sort of a professional requirements. And people, you know, they, they, they're, they're gonna depending their profession to be able to make a cut. Um, cool. This is really good. Jenna?
Uh, I was gonna say something very similar about wanting to know more about the advertising practices. Cuz I think the only thing in the official documentation is that it's posted on the website. Um, so and if that's the only practice, that's the only practice. But anecdotally, I know on the planning board that, um, when we have a vacancy, certainly members are encouraged to, if we know someone who might be interested to pass it around. So I share that cuz I think that might be worth asking when we talk to chairs to talk about what are some of those informal processes that are already happening around recruitment that aren't gonna show up in the official city documentation. But, um, uh, there's probably some, some good and some bad things in that. In terms of sort of working from within the board that you already have, um, for connection. So anyway, I, I say that mostly just when you're thinking about the list of questions to, or guidelines for our conversation with chairs. I think that would be a good point to ask about.
I just, just wrote it in the section, possible questions. Cool, 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 cool. Excellent. Let me, um, oh, um, is there anything else in relation to this, um, topic that we may wanna talk? Cool. So Gemma, do you need any kind of support? Or, um, sending the question to this listener, or you got it?
I think I got it. I think I got it.
Cool. Cool, 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 cool. Um, let me, I'm close my, uh, okay. New businesses. Uh, Jenna?
I, I wanted to say one other thing about data collection, that I do have a new business item. On data collection, this isn't something that we would ask the city for. Um, but I think once we see what we get from the chairs, once we figure out what data we do and don't have about specifically what's happening in Northampton, I would not want us to ignore, uh, body of academic and other literature out there from people who have studied these kinds of issues in other contexts and other communities, if there are things that we can borrow from. I think Mara has some experience in that, I have some. So when we're thinking about future tasks and assignments, we don't need to fully reinvent the wheel. And when it's time, I certainly hope that we can bring some of that data into the conversation as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the beautiful thing in my head is that we're gonna have, you know, the inside, uh, knowledge. And after that, when we do the out, the outreach, we're gonna have that to be able to, you know, to go through all this process that, that is gonna be informed. And I, I agree with, wouldn't have to bring back the wheel. I mean, there is, there is a lot of knowledge in this group, and there is a lot of expertise in this group that we can certainly do it. And I, 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 I'm gonna love when we get to that, to that point. I think you guys are gonna be incredible. Um, new businesses. So, so far, um, you know, me and Gemma have been doing the, the um, the agenda sort of unilaterally because we are, we're trying to sort of, we were trying to find our focus, right? Uh, and at the end, we were talking about, uh, processes, we're transitioning towards, um, internal narrative and talking with, with people who are, you know, embedded in the system. We're gonna move also to, to an out-facing process where we're doing a lot of outreach. But also, we would like, me and Gemma, I would like to invite you to, um, send me, uh, agenda items. And I think that, that's how we, we should do it from now. Uh, even more because if you guys are gonna start talking with people, I know that's gonna sort of stimulate your thinking in what we should be talking. And I want to, we want to be extremely responsive to that, right? Because if not, I'm gonna have to get just pontificating. Uh, so that's one of new business. Is there any other new business that anybody would like to mention? Garrick?
No, no.
Okay. Jenna?
Um, I am hoping that we can return to the topic of possibly finding a regular schedule. With, um, my schedule during the academic year is a lot less flexible. One of my boards was off for the summer and is gonna pick up back in September. So, um, I'm about to have less flexibility and be at a time when I would appreciate much more having a regular knowing when these meetings are coming so that I can pace my work and other scheduling around them. So very much appreciate all of your efforts to pick times that work for everybody, sort of it, week by week as we've been doing. But I'm wondering if we can revisit and hopefully secure a, a regular meeting time from here on out. That will help, uh, enable my participation, um, in the months to come.
So Jenna, would you able to, would you be able to send me sort of options in your schedule for, for a fixed day every two weeks? Like sort of two options, so we can sort of roll it to the, to the group? And it start, it start from there. Because I think that, um, I think we can do it. Uh, but I'm also an optimistic person. So I don't know if that's my optimism speaking or, or reality. So, um, send, shoot me, shoot me a couple, a couple of times that you know are gonna work. And and I can sort of draw a total poll or something that, that is gonna have that. And with, with having, everybody having in mind that we, we need to be flexible. Some of us can be more flexible than others because of our profession and because of our lives. And, and I appreciate that. And I know that everybody sort of trying their best here. Is there any other new business? Oh, as I said, ACLU, uh, the Carcer West Mass. Tomorrow, six thirty, we are doing a presentation about the power of sheriffs in the, in the, uh, in the, in the criminal legal system in Massachusetts. So if you go to the Ford Library website, you're going to find the link. Cool. Excellent. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Let's just have it. Mara, motion to adjourn, looking for a second.
A second.
Garrick, second motion to adjourn. Beth? Beth, you're muted.
Javier, would you like to adjourn? Would you like to adjourn, Javier?
Yes.
Jamila?
Yes.
Mara?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Cynthia?
Yes.
At 8:16.